Mark your calendar for upcoming city club events. Next Monday, so just a couple of days from now, at 5:30 PM, we will host our City, our District Two Multnomah County Commission debate between Canon, um, candidate Shannon Singleton and Sam Adams. District Two covers north and northeast Portland, so tell your friends about that. That debate takes place again at 5:30 at the Alberta Rose Theater in northeast Portland. Next, we'll host a mayoral debate on Tuesday, October 8th, at 5:30 PM at the First Congregational Church in downtown Portland. That debate will be moderated by Jeff Mapes, former political journalist with the Oregonian and OPB. On Wednesday, October 16th, we'll host a program featuring retiring longtime Congressman Earl Blumenauer, sharing reflections on his long and esteemed career. We are also still working on a possible state attorney general debate and a congressional district six candidate forum. Now to tonight's program. Today, more than 800,000 people call Multnomah County home. The Multnomah County Commission, made up of a chair and four Multnomah County commissioners, oversees a budget of nearly $4 billion and 5,500 employees. The county provides safety net services to seniors, those who are homeless, and those who are disabled. It also oversees assessment and taxation, community justice, courts, elections, animal services, bridges, health services, jails, libraries, marriage licenses and passports, and school and community partnerships. But there's more. The county also oversees the budgets for the Multnomah County Sheriff, District Attorney, and Auditor, all of whom are independently elected. So it's a big job. This hasn't scared away great candidates vying for two open county commission seats. Tonight's program again features candidates vying for the county commission seat representing District One, which covers the west side of Portland and a portion of southeast out to about Cesar Chavez Boulevard. Megan Moyer is a Public Policy Director for Disability Rights Oregon. Vadim Mazursky is an administrative law judge with the Social Security Administration. I want to thank you both for running and sharing your evening with us. Our program tonight is moderated by Anthony Effinger, a journalist with Willamette Week. Anthony worked at Bloomberg News for 24 years before joining Willamette Week in 2016. He writes about Multnomah County, so he is a perfect moderator for tonight's program. He has not personally endorsed either candidate. For tonight's rules of engagement, each candidate will be given two minutes for introductory remarks. Our moderator will then pose questions and allow each candidate two minutes to respond. If Anthony chooses to do a follow-up, candidates have one minute to respond. Anthony plans to include a lightning round or two, in which candidates are asked to respond with one word or one sentence. Anthony will rotate the candidates' answers each time. If a candidate chooses to respond to or challenge said, something said by their opponent, they may do so in their next response. Candidates will be able to see how much time they have left for each question, and we ask them to be respectful of time limits. Thanks to those of you who submitted questions as you register for this program. Our moderator has incorporated themes from these questions into his own. In addition, we will have a short, live, audience Q&amp;A session toward the end of this program. For this, we ask audience members to come to this podium and ask your question in 30 seconds or less. We are not looking for statements or commentary, just your question. Candidates, we ask you to respond to these questions in one minute or less, so we can get to several. Each candidate will then be given two minutes for final remarks. So now, please join me in welcoming our candidates and moderator. Anthony, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Hey there. Can you, can you hear me? I'm pretty loud, you could probably hear me without this mic. We could do with that. So a quick note on the lightning round, a couple of extra rules we just decided on. You need to answer either in a haiku or iambic pentameter. We're good with that?
I was actually an English major, so I think I can do that.
Okay, great, great, great. If you have a musical instrument to accompany yourself with on any of the answers, that's also allowed.
Limerick?
Limerick's, limerick's good. Yeah, yeah, good question. Okay, so let's get right into it. We got a, a warm evening here in a room that's a little warm, and hopefully is going to cool off a little bit. Uh, we're going to start with a general question. I want to say the questions from the audience were better than the questions I came up with, so thank you, we're going to use a lot of those. If you win, you'll represent northwest and inner southwest Portland. What is the first issue that you're going to tackle for residents of the district? Choose one, and tell us about your plan of attack. Now, we're starting with, oh wait, opening remarks, excuse me. See, I already blew it. I got hung up on the haikus. Go ahead, sorry, opening statements. Now you know where we're going, though.
Yes, okay. Hi, I'm Megan Moyer, and I'm running for Multnomah County Commissioner because I got frustrated, like a lot of people, with what I was seeing happening at the county over the last five years. I'm really focused on three issues that I'm most concerned about, and I just feel we have to address. The first is we have got to fix our broken mental health and addiction system. This is something I've worked on for years, and I just have not seen the leadership and the vision that we need to finally put the pieces together. I want to push for preschool for all, to serve more families quicker. Families can't wait for the relief of subsidized or free preschool. And last, I want to successfully move our chronically homeless from the streets into permanent, long-term supportive living situations, which I don't see happening. I was born and raised in Salem. I am the youngest of three girls. I have a wife and two boys, one who's three and one who's 13. I've spent my career building things, literally and figuratively. I've been a contractor, I've built housing, including low-income housing. I worked for an international construction company, building clean rooms for one of Oregon's largest employers, but I've also been a policy expert. I've had the pleasure of representing the National Parent Teacher Association in Washington, DC, and they're 5.5 million members. I represented Portland Community College, and it's 30,000 students. The Service Employee International Union here in Oregon with its 65,000 workers, and now I'm honored to be representing people with disability, which is 25% of Oregon's population. I have spent my career solving problems head-on, passing legislation, creating new programs and systems, and I want to bring that experience to Multnomah County, so that we can finally have solutions to these problems that are plaguing our community.
Okay, Vadim?
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming here. It's been hot weather outside of, maybe we'll talk about global warming, but at the same time, I was hoping it'd be a little cooler in here. Appreciate your time. The City Club was actually the first organization I joined when I moved to Portland about 10 years ago. And 10 years later, I'm starting to get letters from the AARP, so I guess I qualify for that as well. A little about me, Vadim Mazursky, you can say Ukrainian name, my family and I moved here about 45 years ago when I was seven years old. We came here with just a few suitcases, no money. We took some loans in order to survive. We didn't speak English. I started school right away, not knowing a lick of English. And we moved around a lot for jobs. My mom went back to, went to community college to become a nurse, and you know, we, as my, as their English and Peruvian, we moved around a lot. Then I went to university, graduated, went to law school, graduated, moved around a little bit more, and became a lawyer, worked in litigation, became a senior policy advisor with Health and Human Services, with the US Health and Human Services, and now work as administrative law judge. And then I moved about 10 years ago to Portland. Once again, my family moved around a lot, so I moved around a lot, and fell in love with the city, decided this is where I'm going to stay, I put down roots, I'm not going anywhere. And part of that is, you know, doing what we're all here for, being part of the solution. I think that there's, we're definitely at an inflection point here in Multnomah County. On the bright side, we have music in the streets, music Portland had, a bunch of concerts bringing people out, Foo Fighters came to Providence Park. We're seeing a lot of green shoots. On the downside, we have tremendous difficulties. We've had a housing emergency, we've had a homelessness crisis, we've had a fentanyl emergency, we've had now a methamphetamine crisis as well. I pledge to stop the chaos as your next county commissioner, and bring pragmatic, calm, and more efficient and honest government. I've spent a lot of time working with individuals, some in this room here, from neighborhood associations, from organizations, from nonprofits, in government, and I have the solutions and the wherewithal to make Portland a better place for the people here and the people in the streets. Thank you.
Terrific. Okay, so now Vadim, we go to you for the first question. Would you like me to repeat that one?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Yeah. If you win, you're going to represent northwest and inner southwest Portland. What's the first issue you want to tackle for residents in your district? Choose just one, and tell us about your plan of attack.
You know, people, we'll talk a little bit about homelessness here, I'm sure, we'll talk a little bit about crime, I'm sure, those are the top three reasons, two, two things that are going on here, as well as mental illness, drug addiction, that interweaves all that. But I hear so much out there from individuals, whether I'm at the Hillsborough, Hillsdale Farmers Market, or I'm at a street fair, people are saying that it's too expensive here in Portland, and they want accountability, like, we're paying a lot of taxes. Is there anybody in this room making 25 million or more? No? Then you're paying the highest marginal tax rate in the country, right here in Multnomah County. And so people want accountability, they want to know that their money's being put to good use. I'm talking to people who actually voted for a lot of these taxes, but they're saying, I'm not seeing what the results of those taxes are. We're having more and more people living in the streets, we're having more and more people dying in the streets, I'm paying a lot of homeless services tax. We're paying a preschool for all tax, and yet, not enough seats are being opened up, a lot of money is be, is waiting there to be spent, how can we improve that? And so for me, it's accountability. We need to rebuild that trust with our government, that we can be effective, the government that works, right? The city that works, the county that works, we need to make sure that that happens again. And so, in the first week that I am in office, I will ask for an audit, a forensic audit of the Joint Office of Homeless Services, because we need to know where this money is going. Next year, we'll have over $300 million spent on, oh, I'm sorry, $400 million spent on homeless services, another 300 for Home Forward. We need to understand where the money's going, what's working, what's not, and make sure that we're being effective, make sure that we're using your money wisely, and making sure that we get the results that you all need, and rebuild that trust. Get people to help that they can't help themselves, and get them off the streets, make sure that we can fix those potholes, that we actually doing the kind of stuff at the county, where the city can do the kind of services that you need as well. And that begins and ends with accountability.
All right. Megan, I have to correct myself, too, you have a little piece of southeast Portland.
You do, yeah.
Yeah, that was my Willamette Week error there. Okay, would you like me to reread the question, or do you?
I feel good, I feel right.
Okay, you feel good? All right, let's do it.
Yeah, the first thing I want to address is I want to make diversion real. And what I mean by that is, we do not have the available drug and alcohol treatment to make diversion a real option for people. It's not enough to have a center and to talk to people, there has to be somewhere that somebody can actually go if they say yes. And I'm passionate about that. This district has been incredibly hard-hit by the fentanyl and methamphetamine epidemic, from Old Town to Downtown to industrial southeast. There are people literally dying in this district every day. And I am disappointed that Multnomah County has not risen to the occasion when the legislature changed the law under 4002, to make diversion a moment that could change and save lives. I think that's what the legislature wants, I think that's what Oregonians want, but we have to be able to connect somebody to treatment. Right now, only 50% of the people who show up to detox every day can get in. People wait weeks to get in to inpatient treatment. There are no dual diagnosis treatment anywhere, not only in Multnomah County, or in the entire state. Diversion's not a real thing if there's not something to divert people to. I believe in treatment, I believe in recovery, I have deep relationships in the recovery community, many of my heroes are decades into their recovery and spend their lives showing people that they can do it. It is the job of Multnomah County to step up and make sure that that moment that somebody says yes, we have treatment on demand.
Great, we're going to talk a lot about diversion and deflection later on, as you can imagine. Okay, so now this question goes to you. Just keep this rolling here. You're running to join a commission that is really controlled by the chair. I didn't realize this when I started covering the county, but it's much different than the city. Power is, is much more diffuse at the city than it is at the county. She controls the, the staff, has veto power over what gets put on the agenda, and a lot of other features that are pretty interesting. Should your priorities, or the priorities of your district differ from the chairs, how do you hope to be effective?
Well, first, I want to start with that I support changing the roles of Multnomah County. As a person with a master's in political science, which I'm not sure was the best life choice I ever made, but I did get a deep understanding of balance of power, I don't think it's appropriate for any chair to be controlling the legislative branch and be the executive. So I would support that regardless of who was chair, but I definitely believe this moment calls for a redistribution of power. Compromise and discussion lead to better policy, and we're not having that at the county level. It is important to listen to different ideas and let commissioners bring things to the table. I think it's going to demand more of commissioners. I think we have had commissioners who have not worked very hard. And frankly, structurally, what was the point? They didn't have any say. That's not going to get good solutions. Compromise, working collaboratively, listening, working to build consensus, is what produces the best outcomes. And so I strongly support redistributing power, so that commissioners can have say in the agenda. I also strongly support having a system in which commissioners feel like they can go against the chair, and not be totally silenced. So, you know, I'm running because I'm passionate about the county and the services that it provides, and for me, if it's a good idea, and it's coming forward, I'm going to vote yes, I don't care who sponsored it. But if it is a poorly thought-out policy, that I believe will be ineffective or unaccountable to taxpayers, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Vadim? Would you like me to repeat that, or you?
Oh, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so part of it is making sure you establish relationships, both with the chair and the other county commissioners, and getting things done. So we want to be able to have a working relationship, and I certainly talk to a lot of people, get out there, talk to people who disagree with me quite a bit, and, and try to find a way to work together. Now, the real issue here is this super-secret executive rule. So back when I announced I was running for the county commissioner, me and Jesse Burke, who ran for a while in District Two, actually got together. And Sharon Myron, who's a friend of ours and has endorsed my campaign, who's the current commissioner from District One, wanted to have things on the agenda, but couldn't have them on the agenda because of this secret rule that says that the chair is able to control the agenda. Now, the person that controls the agenda, obviously, controls the meetings and what can and can't be voted for. So we, we looked at the county charter, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I did the legal thing. I looked at all the stuff that led up to this secret rule. And I say it's secret, because if you Google it, it lends you to a blank page on the county website. And so, the charter says that any of the county commissioners can put something on the agenda, you know? There's the rules of our meetings as well, that the county has put into place. Likewise, they say that the commissioners can put something on the agenda, so can the district attorney, so can the sheriff. It's illegal to go against the charter and to go against the rules of our meetings. Stole Reeves published an opinion about this, actually, saying that there is no veto power for the county commissioner, that the county chair cannot keep things off the agenda. Now, there's a lot of other things that are going on, this is part of it, there's a lot of secret meetings going on, there's a lot of agendas that are behind closed doors, the Buckman neighborhood is suing the county because of certain secret meetings that happened, where decisions were being made. We have to stop the secrecy. And as a lawyer, I can make that happen, first, working together, second, making sure that we get the rules followed, and, and that's where we get the county attorney involved, and make sure that we do what's right, and make sure that we get on the agenda and everyone's opinions are heard.
Okay, a couple of really quick lightningy questions on this topic. How many days should county employees be in the office? Because I, I've looked at the badge records, and actually, it varies a lot, and there's some people who feel like they're not effective if they're not in. Do, just one or two words, or a number, or all of them? All the days?
If you have a position that works with the public, five days a week.
Five days a week, in the office? Okay. Vadim?
Yeah, I, I work for the US government, so if you have actual interaction with people, five days a week, otherwise, three days a week. We need to bring people here, we can't make, have people, I'm sorry, that's too long.
No, good, you policed yourself. I got to be better about that. Watch it, watch it.
This is going to be two hours here.
Going to get tough. Okay, all right, so now we go to you again, Vadim, right? I'm getting used to this rhythm here. Okay, we're going to talk about our favorite topic, deflection and drug abuse, popular here in Portland. Measure 110 passed overwhelmingly in 2020. We got new funding for drug addiction treatment and recovery, we decriminalized possession of small amounts of drugs. And then this year, the legislature undid a lot of that, and recriminalized drugs through House Bill 4002. Did the legislature do the right thing by really overturning the will of the people?
So, I, first of all, the initial measure 110 was very seriously flawed, because it was an initiative, not something that was planned out, so we didn't have the systems in place to make sure that it was successful. What we saw was tragedy. We saw a lot of deaths in the street, we saw fentanyl being smoked openly in front of schools sometimes, we needed to fix it. So I don't think it was overturning the will of the people, because all the polling said most people wanted it overturned. Now, what we got is, you know, maybe leading to another question, deflection. We don't want to put anybody in jail, we want to help people that are addicted to drugs. Part of being a progressive for me is helping people that can't help themselves. And these individuals can't help themselves, they're addicted to drugs, especially fentanyl, which is very, very strong. I worked as an administrative law judge, I talked to a lot of people out there applying for disability, and some of these people have pretty serious drug addiction problems. And when Measure 110 was passed, I was amazed that what I was seeing and talking to individuals about, when I see their medical records, counseling records, and the vast crisis we have here with drug use, that all of a sudden, we legalize it without having the safety net in place to make sure people were successful in getting treatment, and a path to getting people into treatment. So, deflection is necessary, there's three steps. We can use the criminal justice system, but the first step is, if a cop gives you a ticket, you can say, I want to get treatment, and you go get treatment, the ticket goes away. If you get arrested, you can say, I changed my mind, I want to go to treatment. The arrest goes away, it's like, it never happens, it's not on your record. If, for whatever reason, you decide that it was more important for you to make a point about drug addiction versus going to treatment, and you stay, and you get convicted, at that point in time, you can still say, I want treatment. Now, the problem is, our county is so inept that we're not putting the deflection into work. You know, we had a bunch of secret meetings that I alluded to recently, a deflection center was put into place. Now, the US Department of Health and Human Services actually has a brochure on all the different deflection programs that work around the country, under SAMSA, which is Mental Health and Addiction Services. We're not doing any of those here, we're creating a system that doesn't work.
All right, good, good. Yeah, I've been trying to get into some of those secret meetings on deflection. Since I've been at Willamette Week for like six months, I've covered pretty much deflection every day. So if anybody out there can define deflection, feel free to raise your hand. It's interesting. Okay, same question?
Yeah.
Good to go?
So I worked on House Bill 4002 in my capacity with Disability Rights Oregon, and was it exactly what I would have written? No? I have some differences. Do, I think that the legislature needed to address this issue, yes, I do. I do think the unique public health emergency, which is fentanyl and methamphetamine, was a totally different scenario than what voters in 2020 were facing. And I, it was a horrible timing to have those things overlap, but fundamentally, Measure 110 never created the treatment system that it was meant to create, and we are facing an absolute public health crisis. The thing that I continue to critique, and I now leave unfortunately to the county, is the legislature did not adequately fund the treatment necessary for deflection to be real. And I think that they know they didn't. And that is an area of disappointment for me, and I've let legislators know that I, I thought that there was a, I have a level of cynicism about their choice to do this, knowing full well that we do not have an addiction treatment system in Multnomah County, or any county in Oregon, that is ready to be able to provide the treatment that the legislation envisions. So now, that relies on the counties to step up, and I think we must. And it is going to be hard, but there are organizations and people who are doing amazing work to make that possible. I've met several times with an organization called Sober PDX, which is a coalition of different treatment providers and advocates, who are stepping up, saying, we can do more. And all they need is the guidance and guaranteed funding to make that happen, and we have to work collaboratively at this moment, in order to make sure the treatment is real.
Great, thank you. Does everybody know about the Deflection Center, what it is? No? Yes? Okay, all right. The next question's about that. The county's renovating an industrial space in the inner southeast Buckman neighborhood, where police can take people who choose to stay out of jail and seek treatment. Some people on the, on the commission have been critical, because the, the deflection center is not going to offer sobering right away. It's not going to start until the middle of next year, and only, and then it's only going to be about, what is it, 13 to 16 beds? So it's, it's a bit of a hot-button issue. Is this plan so far a good one? And would you have voted to open this center where it is, under these circumstances, if you were on the commission? We're going to you again, right? Yep, Megan?
I'm a strong believer in replicating what has worked to other places, and I've looked at deflection in several locations, but the one that I think really needs to be a model, and legislators have gone as well, is what Pima, Arizona does. And they co-locate deflection at the jail. So there is this moment when somebody is coming in, where they, where they, where they, their choice is incredibly real. You walk this direction, you're getting booked, you walk this direction, and we get you right going in deflection. So I, long-term, would like us to co-locate deflection at Multnomah County Jail. As for this current location, I have concerns. I think there are almost no location that's perfect. A preschool very close is not ideal. I think it will take a lot of work for this to not be problematic in the neighborhood. And I'm, I'm not sure the due diligence has been done to handle that. I don't know what other options were, were even available, so it's hard for me to Monday morning quarterback that. It is not ideal, I absolutely do not support it being the permanent location, I would really love it if we looked at co-location and trying to replicate the model done in Pima, Arizona.
Thank you. Vadim?
So, this is where there's a little bit of a difference between talking and doing the kind of work that's involved in making things actually turn out better for our, our city and county. When the deflection center was announced, I realized that it was not the sort of deflection program that has worked in other places, whether it's Seattle or Hawaii. There's programs that have worked, and they, they work by keeping people off the streets, so they decrease by, on the house rate by about 35%. They keep people from being rearrested, the statistics are out there, but none of them require a physical location. Now, there's a little bit of confusion between a deflection center and a sobering center. About five years ago, Central City Concern ran a sobering center, and they closed down because methamphetamine was causing people to be violent, and their employees could not actually Now, there's a little bit of confusion between a deflection center and a sobering center. About five years ago, Central City Concern ran a sobering center, and they closed down, because methamphetamine was causing people to be violent, and their employees could not actually deal with that level of violence, so they closed it down. Now, those people that are violent are on our streets now, and so you and your neighbors have to deal with that violence. We need a sobering center quickly. We had a report that was, a lot of individuals that work in that area, including county officials, city officials, about how to start a sobering center. The county did nothing. Julia Brim Edwards, a commissioner from southeast, had another report fashioned about how to build a sobering center. The county is still not working on that, and instead, we have the 13 to 16 bed, possibly, down the road for a deflection center. We can have a deflection program, and a sobering center will detox, which is what Washington County's doing. They broke ground on an 86-bed sobering detox center, that's funded with private-public money, so they don't have to have actual more taxes or anything to fund it. We're still behind the curve on that, Washington County's ahead of us. So I actually testified several times at the county commission about how this was not working. I went to the Buckman neighborhood several times and talked to the neighbors over there, and the concerns that they had about having a deflection center that's close to a preschool, where some of their kids were going. That's in an area that's trying to be reinvigorated in that area. They had concerns, they welcomed it. They said, "We can use a deflection center, we want to help, we want to make sure it's safe for our kids." And so I was there, fighting the fight for those families.
Quick follow-up, I can't help myself, I'm a journalist. What do you think of the Pima County, Arizona, model of having co-location in jail?
So, that's an interesting point, because the jails here actually have facilities for detox. There's about 40 beds, and of course, as, you know, some people get arrested, they have to go through detox in jail. Now, we can make that optional, so if we wanted to quickly stand up beds, we can offer people the opportunity, not make them go into a jail facility, but in a separate facility where they have, where staff are already trained, where we have beds, where we can make that happen. And I spoke with the sheriffs, with the correctionals.
Okay, that's good, that's good, thank you. Megan? Quick question, another, different follow-up. Are you familiar with the Washington County facility that Vadim is talking about? And quickly, what do you think?
I'm envious of Washington County. Fundamentally, I think Washington County is a more functional county. I mean, I'm just being honest, I am working-
Not the first time I've heard that.
Yeah, I mean, I am currently working with DA Kevin Barton on, could we do deflection for people who are found unable to aid and assist? So that they don't go to Salem, to the state hospital? I'm probably philosophically 180 from Kevin Barton, but they are very get-things-done oriented.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go to the lightning round. You ready? Everybody braced? All right, so this, the first one goes to Vadim this time, right? Okay. It's half the, the hardest part of this job is figuring out who goes first. Okay, you ready? An old friend visits you from out of town. Where's the first place you take them in your district? And then where do you go to dinner?
I would go, you know, I love music. So the first place I went to when I came to Portland was The Goodfoot. So it would be a music venue. And then for dinner, I, once again, in Goose Hollow, there's an excellent restaurant called The Soup. It's a Korean restaurant, organic food, they go with their own vegetables, well worth going to, if y'all are in the area.
Okay, great. You probably saw my friend Chris at The Goodfoot, she's a huge music fan. We'll talk after.
I'm gonna, as a good lesbian, take them on a hike in Forest Park, and then, if I can get in, I'd love to take them to Long Bong.
Okay, all right, that's a great, those are great answers. Those are great, thank you, okay. Next lightning round question, this one goes to Megan. If your cell phone ring could be any song, what song would you put on it right now?
Back in Black by AC/DC.
I'm a huge AC/DC fan. Okay. Vadim?
Going Down the Road Feeling Bad by The Grateful Dead.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me, given your pen. Big deadhead, too. Deadhead, dead fan, not a deadhead. All right, all right. Okay, all right, one more of these, one more of these? Do we have it in us for another lightning round question? Yes. Which, okay, this is, this might get personal, this has to be off the record, everybody, okay? So just, this is between us. Which county commissioner today, or from the past, is a role model for you as you seek this position? Wait, that goes to Vadim? Right, yes?
So, a role model for me is today Sharon Meyer. You know, it's difficult being out there, we talked a lot about how there's a lot of secret stuff going on. She's fighting the fire, she's calling things out, she's being honest. You gotta be honest out there.
Okay. Megan?
Deborah Cifore as a commissioner.
As a commissioner?
Yep.
Not as chair?
No, um, well, I think you asked commissioner.
Okay, fair enough.
I didn't.
Fair enough, good, good. Remember, this is all between us now, this is personal stuff here.
As an asterisk, those commissioners endorse each one of us, so Deborah Cifore endorsed her, Sharon Meyer endorsed me, so there's a little bit of it.
There you go, there you go, a little, little log-rolling. Okay, we're gonna come back to the lightning round later, if we, if we're up for it, if we still have the energy. All right, do you want to talk about homelessness now? You want to do it? Okay, let's do it. Everybody, many people I talk to say this is the biggest issue that we face here. Every story we write about homelessness in Willamette Week is very well-read. Last month, Multnomah County Sheriff Nicole Morrissey O'Donnell said she would not arrest people for violating the city's restrictions on when and where unhoused people can camp. Last month, she reversed her decision, saying she would do so for at least 120 days, to see if the approach is sustainable. Did the sheriff have her policy right the first time, or after she changed it, and why? And I believe we're going to you first.
Yep. I think the first time.
You think she had it right the first time?
I think she had it right the first time. I could be totally pragmatic and tell you, that is a tried policy that we, that failed. It's been tried in almost every country at some point. Jailing people who are homeless does not actually end homelessness. And to be fairly honest, they're going to be booked and released, so, you know, maybe somebody spends a few days, but it's an expensive, totally ineffective strategy. But I am morally opposed to that. I do not believe in criminalizing status. I think it is okay to sweep streets. I do think it is okay to tell someone that they cannot come back, but the idea that we are going to use our tax resources to jail people who are houseless, because they refuse to go to a congregate shelter that may be unsafe, may be unacceptable of who they are, is immoral to me. I'm not guy, I don't support status crimes. We have a horrible history in this country. We had the pig laws after Reconstruction that criminalized black men who did not have a job, who loitered, who were too loud, and we used that so we could use their labor as jail labor. Up until the 1970s, we had laws called the ugly laws, that said that if you were visibly disabled, you could not be in public, because it offended people. I am morally opposed to criminalizing somebody's status and putting them in jail.
Okay. Vadim?
This is the second time today that Megan and I had this question, so-
Oh, really?
Yeah, we were on K2 this morning.
Oh, wow.
And the exact same question came up, but let me tell you why it's an important question. I don't know how you can be for House Bill 4002, which criminalizes drug addiction, not as a means of putting people in jail, but as a means of getting them treatment, and at the same time, say, you can't criminalize homelessness, as a means to getting people into treatment and help, and not getting them in jail. No one wants to put homeless people in jail. I guarantee, when the city passed the sit-in lie ordinance, their intent was not to put people in jail. But when you listen to our own mayor, who says that whenever they offer people, whether sweeps or otherwise, shelter, and by that, now we have a full menu, you know, we have hotel rooms, we have congregate shelters, we have Safe Rest Villages, we have test sites, we have tiny villages, we have all kinds of places where people can go when it's the right fit, high barrier, low barrier, but 75% to 80% of the people say no. Why is that? Why is that? Drug addiction, mental illness. People are not making good decisions for themselves, and sometimes, you need a carrot-and-stick approach. Again, nobody wants to put anybody in jail, but sometimes, you need to make people make the right choices for themselves when they're making wrong choices. I did a ride-along with a nonprofit called Loving One Another. They're one of the few organizations that actually goes out into downtown and inner south, inner west Portland, and talks to people on the streets, trying to get them in a shelter. Every morning, they call up, and they find out shelter beds, where people to go, where they can send people. So I was with them for one day, we go out, it was a rainy, cold day, and there was an individual that was in a mental crisis. She was sitting there on this rainy, cold day, standing there, I'm sorry, barefoot, her pants were up to her knees, she had scars on her legs, she was not wearing rain clothing, and there were three individuals that were smoking fentanyl next to her, one of them was running back and forth, so drug addiction, mental illness, some combination thereof. They came out, they spoke with her, they said, "Hey, we can take you to Blanche House, and we got a place for you later on, you can get some food, you can get some clothing, you can get a nice warm bed for the night." After they talked with her a little bit, she agreed. Taxi was called, she got taken to Blanche House, and she left without ever walking in. That's the difficulties we're facing, we need to help people that unfortunately can't help themselves.
Okay, great. Another question on homelessness. Which big city in America do you think is doing the best job of getting people into housing? And what ideas have you seen there, either in person or from afar, that could work in Portland? And it goes to Vadim now.
It's me, it's Vadim.
Yep.
So, you know, you talk to a person like Keith Wilson, running for mayor, who actually has visited a bunch of these cities, whether it be Boise, or Houston, or some of these other places that are successful, doing things that we're not doing here. The example I like a lot is Houston, Texas, and I'll tell you why. Because Houston had a really big homeless problem. What they did was, they found a way to coordinate. They had a bunch of service providers that were all siloed. You hear that term a lot with our government, you know, people are solid, our organizations are siloed, but so are our service providers. The Joint Office of Homeless Services is paying them funds, some of them, 100% of their income comes from these grants from the Joint Office of Homeless Services, but they're working independently, they're not working together. So Houston had this bright idea, you know, housing first, we love that, but there has to be a transitional process there. We can't just put people into housing, we can't just make them leave the streets. So they went to all the providers, and they said, "What are you doing? Are all of y'all passing out shoes? Are all of y'all passing out clothing? Let's make sure we have a continuum of care." So everyone's doing a job to get people from the streets and into an apartment, or wraparound services, whatever their needs are. And that was part of their big success in getting people into treatment. Now, here together, an organization that works with homeless providers here in Portland, that actually got the homeless services tax passed, flew that individual from Houston here to Multnomah County, so they can talk about best practices, because they know that that's a need here. And I spoke with their executive director about this, and I'm like, "Okay, well, you know, what was the lesson learned?" She's like, "We learned a lot, we learned a lot about what can happen here, but guess what? The county didn't do its part. The county did not get the people to the table and said, 'Let's do that here in Portland as well.' It worked in Houston, let's make it work here."
You know, when I asked this question, I almost, oh, you still got 15 seconds?
The end.
No? Oh, wow, okay. I think you get points for that. When I asked this question, I almost said, "Anywhere but Houston," because it's so funny, but Houston is the gold standard for this now, which, if you're from Portland, you're kind of like, "Wait, how did that happen?" But I thought we were always the good guys in those New York Times stories, like, you know, best planning and all that. Anyway, but I'm not gonna preclude you from saying Houston, if you'd like to talk about Houston. Same rules.
Yeah, I don't disagree about Houston. I think Houston has some differences that I think largely made some of that easier, particularly around housing. They really let you build anything, anywhere, however you want. We don't do that, but I would put Houston on the list, I'd also put Salt Lake City on the list, really was the inventor of modern housing first. I think there's a lot of misconception about what housing first is, and it does not mean you move somebody who's on the street directly into their own one-bedroom apartment. But it is an acknowledgement that you cannot address things like severe mental illness and addiction, untreated health conditions, and other things that can be significant reasons people are homeless, until somebody is not worrying about, "Where am I gonna sleep tonight?" And I agree with that. I do think that that doesn't mean we're giving somebody an apartment who's still in crisis. But, and I think the thing that it hasn't translated here in Multnomah County, is when we've looked at the homeless crisis, we haven't tailored our strategy to individual communities. And I think the one that we've done the poorest job is people who are experiencing mental health and addiction issues, because we're not able to connect them in a way that connects housing to all those services, and makes sure it has sustained funding. And that, to me, is a really huge missed opportunity.
Okay, great. All right, so Megan, see, I got smart, I put the name of the person who, that only took me halfway through the debate. Learning mindset. This one's going to you, it's another homeless question. Multnomah County's had trouble spending all the money it gets from, did you know this was coming?
I assumed.
Yeah, was this on KGW this morning, too?
No.
Okay, good, all right. Had all, they've had all, spending all the money they get from the Metro Supportive Housing Services levy, right? There's a lot of money, there's 400 million bucks sitting there last tally. Why do you think they've been, and I, well, this has changed a little, I should say, but we'll talk about that. Why do you think they've been unable to get all that taxpayer money put to work? And how would you get it out there faster?
I think one of the fundamental reasons is there is not a clearly articulated vision for what is, what is our goal? And how are we measuring our investments toward that goal? And for me, I would love to convince colleagues, if I'm elected, that that goal really needs to be, where did somebody say yes that first time? And where are they two years from now? Are they in a stable placement two years from now? And the reason I bring that up is because this is why I critique congregate shelters. There will always be a need for congregate shelters, but I don't agree with the plans that are like, "Congregate shelter, yay, yay, yay." Congregate shelters do a good job of filling a bed. They do a really poor job of having somebody leave that bed to a more stable next step. In fact, only 10% of people who say yes to a congregate shelter in six months have moved on. That is not an acceptable outcome. So I, you know, tiny house villages do not serve as many people, but they have a 40% success rate. Is 40% good enough? It's better than 10, but I really think we've got to look at how do we get somebody from the street to a long-term, successful setting? And what are the steps that we need to make sure are in place by community type? So, for those who have, who are experiencing addiction, what is their treatment path? And what is the corresponding housing that needs to be available, so that is successful? For people with mental illness, it may require long-term care. They may need to be in a congregate setting the rest of their lives. That may be their most independent. We don't offer that at all. So I think there's a lack of clear vision.
Okay, thank you. Vadim?
So Washington County said that they've eliminated unhoused camping in their county. How'd they do that? They went from 40 beds in congregate shelters to over 400 in the course of two years. They went out, divided the county into 10 quadrants, they sent social workers out there, they got people into services through the shelter system, and now they're claiming success, where we're still fighting the fight here, to get people off the streets and into shelters. So, congregate shelters is kind of interesting, because it takes anybody. So Safe Rest Villages, if you do something threatening at a Safe Rest Village, you'll be thrown out. Task sites, the same thing, they self-police. Congregate shelters is one of the few places where if you have serious mental illness, serious drug addictions, you can still go spend the night. So yeah, not as many people go through and get into housing there, but it's a different, very different clientele, a little bit of an apple's two oranges. But let me do a little demonstrative aid.
Visual aids.
So, we talk about, the question was, how do we spend the money faster? I don't, I think that's a little bit of an imprecise question, how do we spend the money well? So, the first graph here is the budget, millions of dollars for the Joint Office of Homeless Services. 2017, a little less than 50 million, went all the way up to over 279 million in 2024, and next year's even more. The homeless count from 2017, about 4,000 people. As we're spending a whole lot more money, went up over 50%, 6,297 by 2023. Deaths on the street, this is a very important dynamic here. 2017, 79 people died in the streets, 24 overdoses, four homicides. We miss that a lot, we talk about how shelters are unsafe. Four people died of homicides in 2017, 24 for overdoses. 2022, 315 people died, 123 from overdoses, 26 from homicides. Homicide's up 600%. Talk about safe. It's not about spending money faster, it's about spending money wiser. And that's why I'm saying we need accountability, that's why we need a plan around there and not just a talker.
Okay, great, thank you. Can we all just agree that we're not all going to move to Washington County based on this debate? Let's stay here and fix this. Okay. This is a little, this is slightly off the topic here, but it's related. And this is going to Vadim. You both have significant experience working with people with disabilities. In 2022, a group of Portlanders with disabilities sued the city of Portland over street camping, alleging the city was violating the Americans with Disabilities Act by allowing homeless people to block sidewalks. What role did you both play in this fight, if any?
That's a load of questions, so.
It is?
It is, it is. So let me tell you how this all kind of transpired. There was, I was providing testimony to the city council about budgetary matters. Three individuals from inner southeast were testifying, saying, we're blind. And because of people camping on the sidewalk, we actually can't make it to the center for the blind in southeast. From our city commissioners and mayor, crickets. Nobody even acknowledged their need. So I emailed Disability Rights Oregon. I was on the Disability Commission for a while, had known some people. So I emailed Megan's organization. I said, hey, open shot case, ADA violation. I'm a lawyer. I actually spoke with the Justice Department as well, the US Justice Department. And they're like, we might even join this lawsuit because it's a clear-cut American with Disabilities Act violation. People with disabilities can't actually walk their own sidewalks because things are blocking it. Disability Rights Oregon said, we don't want to take that case. We don't want to take that case. So then, an associate of mine who worked with me in an organization called the Public Action Coalition, Public Safety Action Coalition, went to a lawyer here in town, John DeLorenzo, who loves, loves, loves suing city, state, county, whomever he can sue. Sorry, John, if you're listening to this, but he's a good lawyer, but he sues a lot of people. So, and guess what? The city said, you're right. It's an ADA violation, we want to settle it. We don't even want this to go to court. And they settled it. So now, if, and the plaintiffs were a bunch of individuals living throughout Portland, some of them in wheelchairs, some of them in electric scooters, some of them with other difficulties, mental, physical, who were not able to use their own sidewalks, had horror stories. The person in the scooter had to wash feces off her scooter because she had to go through some of these areas in Old Town. Well, so they settled, and now if you have a disability, you can call. And that's the action part that I'm talking about. We have to represent people that are on the streets, people that are housed. We need to make sure we do the right thing.
Time, time. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. Disability Rights Oregon did refuse to take that case, for good reason. It was not, or its origin story was not people with disabilities trying to find a lawyer and some benevolent lawyer from above decides to take their case. DeLaurentis is a major property owner who has worked with developers in Portland for decades. And developers funded that lawsuit and they looked for people to be their clients. And I say, yes, absolutely, our sidewalks need to be cleared. But where in that lawsuit did it talk about electric scooters? Where in that lawsuit did it talk about Amazon deliveries being stacked on sidewalks? All of it was targeted at other people with disabilities in a gross cynical use of the ADA. I mean, if this is what advocacy for people with disabilities looks like, I'm proud I had no part in that. I think it was an abuse of a law that has done unbelievable good for millions of Americans.
And this has been an advocate and someone that needs help. There were 10 plaintiffs.
Wait, wait, wait.
Do you want to talk about the things I have done?
Let's hold it, let's stop, 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 stop. This is where I got to be, okay. Where are we at? Where are we at on time? Megan still has 35 seconds?
Right.
Okay, finish up. If you're, unless you're done.
Yeah, no, I want to talk about real solutions. And I believe in them. I have worked 20 years building systems. I have expanded in-home care to people with disabilities by changing Oregon's Medicaid's long-term care plan. I have created an ombudsman program to protect individuals with disabilities in residential settings from abuse and neglect. I was on Governor Kitzhopper's healthcare transition team. I have most recently been on Rob Nosa's CCO revitalization work group because I am a Medicaid expert with proven results. I have passed over 30 bills in the state of Oregon that have directly improved the lives of Oregonians. I don't just advocate. I win. And I win for people who need advocates.
Okay. Great, thank you. Just to reiterate, if you want to respond to something that your opponent said, you can use time on the next question to do so, for both, I'm reminding both of you and myself. Okay, we're going to go to another lightning round to lighten it up here before we get into a couple more questions at the end. I'm glad it's cooled off a little in here. I'm not going to pass out here at the thing, that would be exciting. Right off of there. What is the last, okay, now this one goes to Megan. What's the last great book you bought at a local bookstore or checked out from one of, from the terrific Multnomah County Library?
Okay, I have a 13-year-old boy who is obsessed, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Wings of Fire books. But I believe we have purchased all 19, including supplemental graphic novels from Powell's. And, you know, it is always a great go-to when you want your kid to get off a screen, to be able to say, let's go to Powell's. And let's pick up yet more dragon-related literature.
And there's always 19 books. I have a son too, we own a lot of series. Vadim, you bought a lot of these too?
You know, I'll answer it that way as well. So I have a 17-month-old and I'm like, okay, well, these books with a lot of pictures are great and all that, but I'm pretty bored. You know, I've read about the fish that says blah, 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 and all that kind of stuff a lot. And so I got the Green Eggs and Hams books, you know, which apparently a 17-year-old can't sit all the way through. So the ones about the colors, that's fine. But when you get a book thrown at you by your 17-year-old, you really reevaluate your choices in life.
Being, you know, in the business you're in, you should read the Richard Scary, you know, Busy Town books. It's, just, you could put in Multnomah County stuff. Okay.
Put the baby to sleep.
Exactly. Okay, so let's see, that went to Megan, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is going to go to Vadim. Who was the last business leader you met with to talk about how to make Portland more appealing to companies that might come and employ people here? It's kind of a serious lightning round question, sorry about that.
Yeah, I mean, Elisa Schroeder with Mothers has got to be on that list. You know, I talked to a lot of people, so I don't know about the last one. But when I visited her, she was actually filming kind of a documentary about her. And we talked about what she's seeing. If y'all remember Mothers, they had a small footprint and they grew into a big store and they were doing really good. Now they're not doing so good because of some of the problems that we discussed today. And it's like, how can we bring back that vibrancy where people from around the state come and visit, spend money, walk around?
Okay, all right, okay. Megan?
Well, quite literally, my wife. She's a small business owner. She owns a sewing factory called Spool Town that has been located in Portland for nearly 15 years. And so, you know, we talk about small business pretty much every day. And it has been a hard recovery after COVID. Not just for her business, but for a lot of business. And I have a lot of empathy for what people are going through. Trying to make it work, trying to survive with decreased foot traffic, with a lack of a workforce. And on us.
That's it? Sorry, time.
Yep.
Okay, this is literally a two-word, two-word answer. Council Crest or the Selwood Docks?
Oh, Council Crest.
Okay. Vadim?
My dog loves Council Crests.
Council Crest?
It's a good dog park.
Council Crest for the win. Okay, can we do two more before we get to the audience questions? Okay, one-minute response, okay, ready? Taxes, go! No.
Yeah. No, I'm just kidding.
It's a good one, it's a good one.
This goes to Vadim. I'm going to keep the preamble really short. We have some of the highest, we have actually the highest business tax in the country in Portland. I just saw a report on this today. The highest on corporations. It's not much better for S Corps and LLCs either. And we have the second highest wage tax. Do you think that, and that's because of some of these Multnomah County taxes, do you think Multnomah County taxes are too high and would you cut them? This is a one-minuter.
Yeah, they're, was it me or her?
It's you, one minute.
Okay. It's definitely too high. I tell you what, you know, we had US Bank Leave reported on that today. So they took their employees and went elsewhere, one of the surrounding counties. And we have one of the highest vacancy, or the highest vacancy rate of offices in downtown, which is not good for our economy. 20% of the high-income earners have left our county because of the taxes here. So that means down the road, we'll have fewer taxes to pay for the goods that we have. And I talked to an individual that has a company downtown, an internet company. The average salary is $250,000 per individual for his company. Crimey River, right, 250,000, they're doing really good. He can't get people to come downtown because if they work from home, they pay lower taxes. So he wants people to come downtown, work in person, spend the money downtown, go to the restaurants, go to the music venues, go to the arts venues, spend a little money. He can't do that because our taxes are too high. We need to figure out a way to get, to pay for what we need, save money, and make sure it's affordable for everybody.
Okay. Megan?
I think our taxes are too high for certain populations. So, you know, I am not particularly passionate about cutting taxes for people who are making $750,000 a year. Good for you, I wish it were me. But it's not. But I am really concerned about middle-class tax burden because I think it is becoming incredibly difficult to raise a family in Multnomah County. And the issues that I'm particularly worried about is when the services that people voted to tax themselves on aren't relieving their pressures like preschool for all, which I believe in and support, but it needs to serve more families now. And on the other hand, you end up being one of those people who are paying preschool for all tax while paying for preschool. So I am really, if we are going to look at tax relief, I want to focus tax relief on middle-class families.
Okay. Quick follow-up to this. On preschool for all, which is a tax I hear a lot about from people who think that's the one that kind of is very onerous. There was a debate at the county today about whether or not, well, they did. They postponed the 0.8% increase for another, for a year. So it's not going to, it's not going to go up until January 1 of 2027 now. But they also had a debate about whether or not to index it to inflation so that the threshold goes up. So it's $125,000 individuals now. It should, if you index that, it would be 140, say, now. Yes to indexing this thing, or no?
Yes, to indexing.
Vadim?
Do I have a minute?
No, you got one answer, one word. Yes to indexing?
Yeah, I advocated that for a while now, yeah.
I think I saw your email about that. Okay.
Yeah, no one interviewed me, but feel free. Yeah, I sent an email press release about a week ago about some of this stuff, and that's part of it.
Okay. All right, so shall, oh, I have one more, sorry, I got one more, that's it. And then we're going to go, this is really easy, it's really easy. So, you know, the old slogan for Portland used to be, keep Portland weird. But Tim Walz took that kind of, he kind of took that over, it means something else now. What's your slogan for Portland? What's your elevator pitch to people who, you know, who should be moving here? Who aren't right now? Because it's, you know, immigration has dropped off. This goes to Vadim, right? I didn't write it down.
Yeah, it's tough, I don't remember either. So it's the most livable city in the country. Few people know that we have the most music venues here in Portland of any city in the country. Austin is known as the music capital of the world. We have more independent music venues here. And we're getting a few more also, including Live Nation possibly. You know, we are a walkable city. We have a river coming through the middle, which is very beautiful. We need to spend more time around there. It is an amazing, amazing city. And we have the most diverse group of people that live here, the most caring group of people that live here, the most welcoming. I know that because, I'm an Ukrainian immigrant, I've been trying to find my place in the world for a long time. And I found it here because of people like you in this room. It's the most welcoming city I know. It's the most livable city I know. And people in New York Times and Washington Post and Wall Street Journal will write about some of the problems that we have that we discussed today. But it is still the most livable city in the country. We're less expensive than Seattle, less expensive than California. We have some problems with costs, but we're pretty good here and we can be better.
Okay. Megan?
Best food anywhere. Best food. If you're going to come to Portland, be hungry. You can eat a great meal, every meal, at a reasonable price that will compete with any Michelin star restaurant in the world. Our food is that good.
Nice, nice. So now you know if either of you move to Washington County the next year, you're going to end up in We'll Lam it Week. And we're going to say, you said, anyway. Okay. Audience questions? Should we try this? Okay. I have instructions that if people go on too long or start making statements, I'm supposed to tackle them. So, who would like to try that? Anybody want to come up and ask a question? Let's, right back there and then we'll go here. Come up to the podium, yeah. You're on. Oh, line up, yeah, we'll line up. Don't be shy, it's not as bad up here as it looks. I got used to it, you can. All right. We're not going to have any trouble, are we?
I don't know about that. I don't want to be tackled, though. So my name is Jackie Tate. I'm the president of the Multnomah County Employees Union, Afsmi Local 88. And in all transparency, we have endorsed Megan Moyer for our candidate because we like to think that we get to hire our bosses. And I feel like there's often a lot of cynicism about what happens at the county. Thank you. And so, or a misunderstanding what the county does, right? So I guess what I would say, my question is, what is your understanding of the services the county actually provides? We're not the city, we're the county. And what is your experience that makes you the right person to lead these services?
Thank you. All right, no title. Are we doing two minutes on these? We're doing one, one minute, okay. And that one goes to Megan, because you talked about food.
Yeah, I think my love of the county is because of what the county does. And it delivers services to our most vulnerable, most likely to fall between the cracks. And I feel like the reason I was drawn to run is because I've worked on those programs most of my career. I care deeply about providing services to seniors and how can we help people live independently in their own home as long as possible. I care deeply about making sure that people with developmental disabilities are free of abuse and neglect, which is important work that the county does. I care about people having access to free healthcare, which Multnomah County does with its health clinics. I care about making sure that when people are incarcerated, that when they leave, they have a fresh start and a support system. And that is part of what the county also provides.
Thank you.
So the county does, you know, several things. It's in charge of the libraries, in charge of some business, some bridges. But it's the human services. It's healthcare, it's drug addiction treatment, it's mental illness, working with those individuals. And really, it's helping people that can't help themselves. That's my theme here. For me, being a progressive is helping people that can't help themselves. And that's why I'm running. But part of it is also the experience that was asked about. So I'm a federal employee and I'm a union member. Until I ran for office, I was on the executive board for my union, a federal union. So Afsmi didn't endorse me unfortunately, but I'm still a union member and I support union membership. I was with AFL-CIO, IFPTE, Judicial Council One, Vice President for 10 states. So, but also, it's about, you know, I was senior policy advisor where I saw, oversaw programs nationwide. I managed two different offices, both in Houston and Portland. I'm used to both being in management and being a union person, and that's what it'll take.
Terrific. Thank you. Come on up.
All right.[1743.61]
You're the next contestant.
Thank you. Well, I don't know, I, I don't have very good performance, but I'm Vandana Srestha, I actually am the state director for ARP. Uh, we don't endorse anybody. My question to you is, uh, you know, according to the latest census report, Portland metro area is aging faster than any other, uh, place in the country. So, and we also know that Multnomah County is an age-friendly county, it's a designated age-friendly county. So my question is, what are you gonna do in your role to make sure that Multnomah County is a great place for people to age?
Great question, great question. So this goes to Megan.
Goes to me, more age.
No, uh, to you, sorry. I even wrote it here.
Uh, so, a, a couple different things. One is, um, one of the reasons I, I ran for office is I had a conversation, uh, over by Jefferson, uh, where that Plaid Pantry is, across the street from there, uh, with an individual, and, uh, a little lady came by and she said, "I'm walking my dog now because I'm scared to walk my dog at night. We have to do better. We have to make sure that people are not scared to walk their own streets." Uh, but part of it is also, you know, we talked about a little bit of taxes. So my tax proposal was, you know, not only getting preschool-for-all, making it statewide so we can save on taxes here in Multnomah County, but it's also, uh, to lower the, uh, property taxes for people over sixty-five and people with disabilities. So we have a three-hundred-thousand deduction so that, uh, people can actually afford to stay. I'm out in the Hillsborough Farmers Market, I'm talking to people, and people are like, "I can't afford the taxes anymore. I moved away to Washington County." Um, and, uh, and so, no, 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 I mean, that's, it's, uh, I'm, I'm definitely staying here, it's a great place to live, but we have to make sure people aren't priced out of their homes, especially people on fixed income.
You weren't looking for houses out there? Okay, all right, come on. Megan?
Yeah, um, I think this is a really important conversation, and I think there are several issues that I think we need to address as Multnomah County ages. One is that one of the fastest-growing population, excuse me, populations of homeless are homeless over sixty-five, um, and, and that is for a lot of reasons, but, um, that, that is one we need to be strategic about, the unique needs of seniors who are now becoming houseless. Second is, and I'm working on legislation, um, of which ARP has supported in previous sessions, which is that Oregon does not have a designated percentage of accessible units when we use public dollars to fund housing. Um, federal government does, but we don't. I have a bill that, with Disability Rights Oregon, that'll have ten percent of publicly-funded housing will, will have access, will have, ten percent of units will be accessible, and we gotta make sure that people can have access to public transit so that they can continue to be vital members of their community.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, I'm an overburdened taxpayer. Um, in Multnomah County, uh, you set the property taxes, and we already have discounts for veterans, and we also have discounts on property taxes for senior citizens. To combat NIMBYism, would you consider, as commissioner, creating some kind of discounts for homeowners and property owners who are impacted by behavioral health centers and other supportive services, uh, you know, centers that might impact property values?
Interesting. I told you the questions from the group were really good. Okay, so that goes to Megan.
No. Uh, sorry, I mean, I'm honest, I wouldn't, um, because I think that there is some really inaccurate and unfair, um, stereotypes of what it's like to live near people with disabilities, including people with mental illness, um, that are not accurate. You probably do live next to people with severe mental illness. You probably might have a group home that, in your neighborhood, that is serving people with developmental disabilities. People with disabilities are a natural occurring part of our community, and living with them and next to them is not a burden. It does not actually lower your property value, you already do. You just don't know who they are. We are not different. So no, I don't, I think that that stigmatizes people with disabilities even more, so, no.
I, I understand the, the difficulty here. Uh, for most people, their home is their retirement. For most people, their money, their equity is in their home. They spent their life paying for it, and the county can put, uh, uh, services next to a place, and all of a sudden that equity disappears. So, uh, while I don't think that it's the county's purview to lower taxes based on certain individuals and what's next to their homes, I do think that the county should pay attention about where it puts things. So when I'm at the Buckman neighborhood and people are saying, "We should not have a deflection center with people with drug addiction, serious problems are being taken," where we have kids around there, where we have a preschool around there, where we, uh, live and play, why not somewhere a little farther away? And even our own police, uh, chief said, "We need something a little more east because we need people from Gresham to be able to take people here and not have to drive all the way to Buckman." We need to make things, uh, make sense. It's not too much of a ask there, we need our county to think about the people that live in our neighborhoods, as well as the people that use the services.
Okay, thank you. We don't have time for one more? Quick, how about a quick one? Okay, quick, quick! I was fighting for you there.
Steve Herring, I'm just gonna say I'm representing myself at the moment. How do we get people to engage with the county and provide transparency to the public about the things they don't know the county provides?
Hmm. You mean, like, how do we get them to go to, like, meet, the county meetings? Free, free cookies. I'll take, I'll take that question. Better chairs? No, the chairs are pretty good. Okay. Do you guys want to take a quick, just twenty seconds on that?
Yeah, I mean-
Go, twenty seconds.
That, that's, that's my job, you know, I, I, I work with neighborhood associations, I, I go to a lot of neighborhoods, I'm the president of a coalition neighborhood association. You shouldn't have to go to the county, the county should come to you, and that's not happening right now. People expect that people come to testify at the county, it's crazy, there's not many people that do that because they don't know what's going on. Um, we need to be out there with the neighborhoods and the businesses, talking to them.
Okay. Megan?
Take public testimony before you've made your decision. I, I, I mean, honestly, I think we need to listen to people before everything has been decided, and I think you'll see a lot more engagement.
Terrific, okay. It's a, okay, one last one, this is it, I promise, this is it, this is it. I'm getting, I'm gonna get in trouble here. You're getting me in trouble, I know everybody's like, done. Okay, all right, no tackling, make a deal, quick.
My name is Mavrette McClellan, I live at Tullerilgar Plaza. I was at a meeting with council candidates yesterday. They said, "How are you, how can we get the council to work, uh, how can we get the, uh, commission to work with us? We need the money, you have the strings, we have the programs, we need the needs, we know, goodbye, thank you."
Thank you, okay. So the question was-
What was your question?
How do we work collaboratively with the city?
Sure, yeah.
Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, quick, twenty seconds. Megan?
I think it is about coming together for a shared vision for our community, a, and I think that that will require being open to new people, and we're gonna have a totally new government in the city, a, and I think that is a really unique opportunity to start over.
Okay, all right. Quick.
It, it's about building trust and making sure that we work together early on so we trust each other and work together later on, so three of the mayoral candidates have endorsed my campaign, Mingus Maps, Renee Gonzalez, Keith Wilson, uh, because we worked together on various things already. Several city council people have endorsed my campaign because we've already been working on things. That builds the trust so we can work together going forward.
Excellent, all right, so now we have closing, closing statements, and that's it. And the first closing statement is from Megan. Two minutes, right? Yeah, two minutes.
I hope, if anything, came from this debate or in what I have said, is that I believe that the issues that we're facing in our community are fixable, that we can address these issues, and that I'm hoping that this is a moment in time that we will look back on and say, "We chose compassion, and we chose to stick with what it takes to provide services." You know, I feel like this is a race about the direction of Portland and Multnomah County. Who are we at our core? Are we compassionate people who just want our government to do a better job delivering on the services we ask them to do and tax ourselves to do? Or are we gonna go in a different direction that looks toward incarceration as the solution? I am passionate that we can stay to our core as a kind community and still be effective. That's what my message is. I believe in the services of Multnomah County, I believe in the people who work with Multnomah County to deliver them. But we do need to right some poor policy decisions, we do need greater accountability, and there is a lot of work to do to build a functional mental health and addiction system that has never been built. And I want to be that person who digs deep, rolls up their sleeves, and has meetings all day about how we fix these problems.
Okay. Vadim, closing, closing statements.
Yeah, yeah, it, I, it, it is about, um, the future of Portland and our values, and it is about compassion, but it's compassion for everybody, not just for certain groups. It's compassion for the plaintiffs in that ADA lawsuit. I, I lost my cool a little bit there, I'm, I'm a judge, I'm usually pretty cool about stuff like that, but I know those individuals, they suffered, they needed compassion as well. The people on the street that were blocking their way, they need compassion. Three hundred and fifteen people died on our streets last year. That is not compassion. Saying that we can't use our public safety net in order to get those people into treatment is not compassion. Recently, I, I met with, uh, an employee at Blanchet House, and that individual told me about a woman named Bethany, and I recorded a story about this online, but nonetheless, Bethany had, uh, mental illness. Uh, when she was medicated, she did okay, according to this individual. He fed her, he knew her for a long time. And, um, Bethany unfortunately went off her meds quite a bit, and when she did that, she was not cognizant of what was going on around her, she'd walk in the middle of the street, they tried to get her help, they tried to get her into services, but she did not reach that threshold of getting even temporarily committed so we can put her back on her medications. I spoke with a police officer that also had contact with her about two weeks ago, and they tried to get services, but once again, the bar here for committing people even temporarily is so high that they were unable to get the services. We need to lower that bar to get to help people. My opponent's organization is against lowering that bar. We need to have compassion for people who are living in the streets, because Bethany, early in the morning, unmedicated, walked, walked in the middle of Burnside, got hit by a car and died. We had opportunities to help Bethany, but because we're talking about policies and we're in laws and all these things, we're not thinking about the individuals, and we have to think about the individual, that's very important here, that's compassion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's our program tonight. Um, my takeaway is that I'm really pleased that we have two, um, very smart, compassionate,